I pay a couple of orders. State regular meeting, City Council has incorporated the annual meetings notice of 2014, which was filed in the City Clerk's office and Post-Center Bulletin Board on December 27th, 2013, and sent to the Star Ledger in the Home District room. All compliance provisions will be reported in the following due to our Missouri local office.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dustin?
Here.
Councilwoman Queston?
Here.
Councilor Lewis?
Here.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Here.
Councilman Keenan?
Here.
Councilman Sedan?
Here.
Councilman Ballmer?
Here.
Councilman Mazzan?
Here.
President Corrigan?
Here. My members present, at this time I ask that Councilman Paul Torres please issue the prayer of her allegiance to the one who leads lives.
Almighty God, as we legislate for our community, may you show us a sense of justice and fair play, purging all every day. Above all, when we seek out their own will, give us the strength to follow it regardless of all inconsiderate.
As the ladies and gentlemen, we stand in the right station of our hour. Consider we follow your force of strength. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go on to public speaking, I want to yield the force of Councilman Paul Torres with his presentation. Councilman Hughes, mic at the front. How's everyone's doing today? Can I take the members of Someone's Daughter's approach?
Many municipalities or individuals like to recognize an individual or an organization after they complete their mission or their job or they passed away. Here in the city of Elizabeth, the City Council here, we like to recognize, we like to recognize an individual or individuals while they still continue to do great work in the community. Today, we are recognizing an organization called Someone's Daughter. The short period of time that I'm at City Council, I see this organization everywhere. Fish fries, feeding the homeless, turkey, Thanksgiving dinners, toy drive, but today they're not here to be represented, they're not recognized for that. Today, they're being recognized for their work with the youth. Anyone that knows me knows I'm very passionate about our youth, and I think they share the same passion. So today, I'd like to give you a commendation from the city of Elizabeth. The city of Elizabeth recognizes and congratulates Someone's Daughter for achieving and helping girls develop pride in themselves and their bodies and their relationships with peers as well as the need for to protect them and negative influence and change their leadership skills and support their success as adults and wish them done continued success in all their future endeavors. So I just want to say thank you for all your hard work, it's not a notice, the city recognizes you, and I wish you more organizations like you in the city, if this work would be a better place. I would like to recognize the CEO and founder Natasha Davis, would you like to say a couple of words? And you can recognize her.
I'm truly thankful for this opportunity, I want to thank Councilman Torres, Councilman Torres for acknowledging us and supporting us in everything that we do. He's at all those events as well, fish fries and serving the homeless, so we're grateful for that. I have a wonderful team, and I do want to give them all our experience and introduce themselves, but I also hope with this acknowledgement that we can build relationships with the rest of the City Council members and continue to do some great work in our community. We're excited about the work that we've achieved so far, and we just want to continue servicing our young residents in the community. So, I'll start off with the President, and then I want to say hello to all the members.
Good evening all, my name is Nikki Brown, I am the president of Someone's Daughter.
And Lisa Serrano, and I am the executive vice president of Someone's Daughter.
Good evening, my name is Lolita Slater, I'm the executive director of the board.
Good evening everyone, my name is Charlotte Batters, I'm the ambassador for Someone's
Good evening everyone, my name is Three Mark Sover, I'm the most experienced member of Someone's Daughter.
Good evening, my name is Natasha Nahalitzer, I'm the board for Someone's Daughter.
We have the City Council today for your best. Thank you. One more presentation.
Please give them a round of applause. Next up, I'm going to ask Councilwoman Frank Queston, Carlson Daniel, Patricia Perkins April, April is autism awareness month. This is very meaningful to my heart. 2012, I stumbled and I was with autism, so this is very personal for me. April 2nd, we had a special individual in this city who's a mother, a wife, a police officer, does great things here in the city, but April 2nd, she actually threw an event at her dojo, the karate school. It was a kickoff, kickoff challenge to raise money for autism awareness. It was one of the best events that I attended this year. I just want to thank you for bringing awareness to the city. The reason I asked my colleagues to come up here with me today is because they actually attended and supported the event. Many of you don't know this, but one out of every 68 kids is diagnosed with autism. In New Jersey, it's one out of every 45. So we are very high state with autism that affects a kid, sorry if I get a little emotional. Nina Silva, I just want to thank you again from the bottom of my heart, I know my colleagues are going to speak, but thank you so much for bringing awareness to the city, you have my support, you will always have my support when it comes to something like this.
I'm the advocate. Just like Councilman Torres' last son, who's now 15, he's diagnosed with autism, oh, back in 2001, so it is something that we need to become aware of as a community and try to work together in terms of educating people about autism and also helping the children and families who have children with the diagnosis. So I want to truly thank you because it's residents like you, residents like Natasha, who do things for the community because God has placed it on your heart, and you just know what you do. And I want to say thank you, and keep doing what you're doing, and we have our support.
I just want to say that without their support and given, I couldn't mean it any better. I put together this event in a matter of less than two months, and I set a personal goal to see us reach $1,000 to give to autism speaks, and as of today, we've already raised There are autism speaks anymore. My goal, we started this off as Tyler's Kitchen, Tyler's my son, my son's diagnosed with autism this year, or October, but I'm a last year, sorry. But my goal now is to start an organization, non-profit organization, to help the community, to help the city of Elizabeth, because everybody doesn't have insurance, everybody doesn't have the facilities to run to or the places to go. A lot of times, you're given a diagnosis and your life's ending. Okay, your son has autism, your daughter has autism, what's the next step? And nobody hears you in that direction. My goal is to hopefully one day come up here and say, well, we have a nonprofit organization called Tyler's Kitchen, this is what we're going to offer our community. And so it's not just for my son, it's not just for my death who was also diagnosed, it's for those out there. I want, even want to help those out there, people that don't have the facilities to go to. So if there's ever any idea to help anybody else, if you guys know anybody that needs some information, if I don't have the answers, I'll ask these guys. If these guys don't have the answers, we'll make a way to find the answers and get them off the thingy. So thank you again.
Ladies and gentlemen, last round of applause to Nina Silva, to Someone's Daughter. At this time, we move on to public speaking. Is there any member of the audience or taxpayer who wishes to address the council? Just come up to the microphone. You have three minutes to speak. Any member of the audience who wishes to address the council, now's the time. Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
I'm going to speak.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I asked for my microphone, sit down here. Come on up.
I'm from the city, I'm the representative today of the Louisiana Department of Services, I'd like to run, Wendy, good morning, sir.
Thank you, sir. Move on to the public hearing, sir.
Ordinance number 4459. Authorize the adoption of a bond ordinance in the amount of $5 million with a down payment of $250,000 for resurfacing of various records.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4459. Is there any member of the audience wishing to address the accounts on ordinance number 4459? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4459.
Hold on, hold on. You got to get the microphone, this is Station A, and I have to give the record, sir.
My name is Timothy Bracy, living in the city of New York, this is my name.
What's your address, sir?
I'm in 637 Lake O'Leah Avenue.
Okay.
You know, I was referred to bars, I don't imagine who did the bars, where the city's on, if it impacts the tax payers in the future, and if we're late, we're impacted by taxes.
Who left me that answer, sir? Yes?
Ordinance number 4468. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Francisco de Villa 317-9.
You heard reading of ordinance number 4460. Is there any member of the audience wishing to address City Council on ordinance number 4460? Is there any member of the audience wishing to address the accounts on 4460? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4461. Amend chapter 10.8.10 in code of the city of Elizabeth entitled Stop Intersections, specifically to add a four-way stop at the intersection of Third Street and Pine Street and installation of stop warning, sign 100 feet before the stop signs at said intersection.
You heard reading of ordinance number 4461, sir. Any member of the audience wishing to address City Council on ordinance number 4461? Anyone wishing to address the ordinance number 4461? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting.
Ordinance number 4462. Authorize the adoption of a special emergency appropriation ordinance in the amount of $1 million for contractual and required severance liabilities resulting from the retirement of employees pursuant to NJSA 48453.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4462. Is there any member of the audience wishing to address City Council on ordinance number 4462? Again, is there any member of the audience wishing to address City Council on ordinance number 4462? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the meeting. With the consent of my colleagues, the most expensive reading of petitions and communications, and the report of City officers, moving on to ordinance number 1st reading, since there is none, we're going to go to ordinance number 5th passage.
Ordinance number 4459. Authorize the adoption of a bond ordinance in the amount of $5 million with a down payment of $250,000 for the resurfacing of various records.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4459, my final passage. What is your pleasure?
Will you hear it from both of you?
Move then secondhand comments. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dustin? Councilwoman Queston?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedan?
Aye.
Councilman Ballmer?
Aye.
Councilman Mazzan?
Aye.
President Corrigan?
Aye. My members, ordinance passing on final.
Ordinance number 4468. Authorize the establishment of a personalized handicap parking space for Francisco de Villa 317-9.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4460, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear it from both of you?
Move then secondhand comments. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dustin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedan?
Aye.
Councilman Ballmer?
Aye.
Councilman Mazzan?
Aye.
President Corrigan?
Aye.
Next ordinance. Ordinance number 4461. Amend chapter 10.8.10 in code of the city of Elizabeth entitled Stop Intersections, specifically to add a four-way stop at the intersection of Third Street and Pine Street and the installation of a stop sign warning, 100 feet before the stop sign's been said at an intersection.
You heard reading of ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear it from both of you?
Move then secondhand comments.
Yes, sir, President.
Councilman Torres.
I'm just glad that this is finally passed. This is like my third request, it's much needed in the neighborhood, and hopefully will save some lives.
I agree with you, Councilman, you did a great job getting this through. Third Street defines, you know, it's been an intersection where we've had a lot of accidents recently, and Councilman's been doing a great job getting this passed. I think all your colleagues will be supporting you on this. Thank you. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dustin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedan?
Aye.
Councilman Ballmer?
Aye.
Councilman Mazzan?
Aye.
President Corrigan?
Aye. Ordinance passing on final.
Ordinance number 4462. Authorize the adoption of a special emergency appropriation ordinance in the amount of $1 million for contractual and required severance liabilities resulting from the retirement of employees pursuant to NJSA 48453.
Heard reading of ordinance number 4462, what is your pleasure?
Will you hear it from both of you?
Move then secondhand comments. Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dustin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedan?
Aye.
Councilman Ballmer?
Aye.
Councilman Mazzan?
Aye.
President Corrigan?
Aye. Ordinance passing on final. Moving on to business, I need to say to the votes. Move then secondhand, vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dustin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedan?
Aye.
Councilman Ballmer?
Aye.
Councilman Mazzan?
Aye.
President Corrigan?
Aye. My members, the votes have been suspended, and the clerk will read the resolution.
The first item, letter dated April 21st, 2014, from Chief Financial Officer, Quest Edgar Arnold Blatty. Consider authorize of city guaranteed parking revenue bonds refunding series 2014 in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3 million in order that the Elizabeth Parking Authority capture costs savings of approximately $170,000 by refinancing existing debt service Second item is letter dated April 22nd, 2014, from Business Administrator, requesting to confirm City Attorney's commencement of a civil action against the rebuilding of assets in Union County's decision to the total proportion of the city's share of the annual certified fund.
Heard reading of this resolution, what is your pleasure?
Will the resolution be drawn?
Move then secondhand comments.
Mr. President?
Councilman Mazzan.
What is the purpose of the emergency that exists that we have to do this without even discussion, the facts?
Which one?
The Law Department requests you...
The understanding I have from the Law Department is that we need to file this complaint, by the way. They have now basically withheld some of our money, and are trying to open up an emergency action to reverse that proposal. We cannot wait another two weeks.
Thank you.
Any other? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dustin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston?
Aye.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedan?
Aye.
Councilman Ballmer?
Aye.
Councilman Mazzan?
Aye.
President Corrigan?
Aye. Resolution passed. Move on to business.
Authorize amendment fiscal year 2014 budget to the service and higher revenue, a Department of Homeland Security respond to accountability grant on behalf of the Port Authority of New York, New Jersey, in the amount of $100,000. Authorize a dedication by Ryder, the fiscal year 2014 budget for donations acceptance of requests and gifts from the Elizabeth Housing Authority to support the empowerment of women for the 21st century then, as required by NJSA 48529. In compliance with the state fiscal year 2014 appropriations act, City Council is requesting to approve all payments related to accumulated uncompensated absence benefits. Authorize proper city officials to submit a request to the Director of Division of Local Finance to make corrections in the city's 2014 fiscal year municipal budget to account for change in title or text appropriation approved subsequent to the adopted budget. Authorize the adoption of the resolution, provided for a special emergency appropriation to fund the cost of accumulated severance liabilities resulting from retirements in fiscal year 2014, concomitant with ordinance number 4462. Amend the resolution adopted July 23rd, 2013. Authorize the award of contract cloud and cloud espires for the defense of tax appeals in the amount not to exceed $130,000, specifically to include compensation based on the contingent results of tax appeals filed and prosecuted for properties that are significantly under assess. Authorize award of contract to Matthews Lock &amp; Safe Company Inc., Elizabeth, under the Union County Cooperative Purchasing Contract for the purchase of lockset services and locked hardware for various parts, for the period April 1, 2014 through April 1, 2016, at a cost not to exceed $150,000. Award, authorize award of contract to W. Mason Company, Inc., of August, New Jersey, for the purchase of all the supplies to 100 cartridges for printers and fax machines for all departments, under the Somerset County Co-op, for the period April 1, 2014 through March 31st, 2016, in an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Heard reading of the resolution, what is your pleasure?
Will the resolution be drawn?
Move then secondhand, are there any comments? Vocal.
Councilwoman Perkins-Dustin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Queston?
No. I will.
Councilman Torres?
Aye.
Councilman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Keenan?
Aye.
Councilman Sedan?
Aye.
Councilman Ballmer?
Aye.
Councilman Mazzan?
Aye.
President Corrigan?
Aye.
Authorize award of contract to Quality Communications, L.A., New Jersey, for the purchase of two tubular book tables for the fire department, at a total cost of $9,941.70. Authorize award of contract to Jim Alsay and Industrial Products, Randolph, New Jersey, for the purchase of a miscellaneous hazmat gear for the fire department, at a total cost of $37,164.00. Authorize award of contract to Evans and Associates, Inc., New Jersey, for the software and hardware support and software maintenance for the Department of Finance purchasing and revenue, for the period January 1, 2014 through December 31st, 2014, in the amount of $33,285. Resign the resolution adopted October 24, 2006, designating MAR Acquisition Group as the redeveloper of Parsel Sea, specifically to de-designate MAR Acquisition Group, LLC, as redeveloper of Parsel Sea within the Midtown redevelopment area, and execute all documents pertaining to the de-designation of MAR Acquisition Group, LLC, for Parsel Sea. Reject all bids received on April 8, 2014, for the furnishing of traffic signal parts for the Electrical Bureau of the Police Department, and authorize a purchasing agent to readvertise such thing with substantially revised specifications. Authorize proper city officials to enter into an agreement with the Rutgers Biological Health Sciences at Rutgers to provide diagnosis, treatment, monitoring, case management, and field services for city residents confirmed or suspected of tuberculosis disease for the period of January 1, 2014 through September 31st, 2014, in an amount not to exceed $46,729. Authorize the proper city officials to... Authorizing proper city officials to submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development a five-year consolidated plan receiving 40 for fiscal year 2014 through 2018 funding for community development block grants, emergency solutions grants, and home program funds. Amend the resolution adopted February 11th, 2014 with the Elizabeth Development Company for the existing contract period of July 1, 2012 to December 31st, 2013, specifically to amend the contract period to December 31st, 2013 to December 31st, 2014. Establish handicap parking space in front of the premises located at 940 Sheridan Avenue. Designate April as national domain by a month, paying utility bills, approving rental licenses.
Heard reading, the resolution, voice your pleasure.
Move the resolutions for both presidents.
Move then second item. Any comments? Voco.
Councilwoman Perkins Dusty. Aye. Council Questa.
Aye.
Council Torres.
Aye.
Council Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council Keenan.
Aye.
Council Sedaniam.
Aye.
Council Golden.
Aye.
Council Mazzan.
Aye.
President Corvus.
Aye. All resolutions passed.
We're going to move on to commendations. First, we have an annual Elizabeth Thomas Scholarship Program. Check to manage the Council Questa to point this together here. I'll give off the names of those who are going to be receiving scholarships on the evening of the program. Sandra Toll, Idaya Adwood, Nicole Alzanti, Darwin Batey, Erica Alfaro, Irma Renados, Anthony Coletti Jr., Tyler Arias, Willmark Rosinik, Paola Patti, Angel Vaz, Anthony Tassi, Angela Bena, Jacenia Palacio, Ermani Miller, Michaela Singleton, Erwan Bryce, Elizabeth Tramontana, Emily Soza, Christopher Markowitz, and Willie Silver. To all the fellows, congratulate them on receiving a scholarship from Elizabeth Thomas Scholarship Program and wish them great success in college. We also have tonight a presentation of a reward to Aina Silva, recognition for autism awareness and Someone's Order being educated on females to strive for success. Are there any other commendations?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Questa.
President, I need to add one more of the recipients, Kevin Mendosa.
Kevin.
Kevin. Kevin Mendosa.
Mendosa.
Thank you.
So with your effort, we're giving out 20. Congratulations, Council.
Thank you.
Any other commendations? We'll move on to memorials. Memorial of the night for Phyllis Hamilton, Dominique Poblesy, Nicola Maymon, and Paul O'Seton. Is there any other memorials? At this time, Aina Silva will provide for the memorials, please.